Order and the first agenda item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything that we need to to change on the agenda?
Uh, you can just pass it. Do you want?
Okay.
Just go.
I just wanted to see if there was any changes needed.
Oh, sorry, I was trying to be funny. No, there's nothing to add. Asking you to approve the budget.
Uh, I didn't get it.
Yeah, I know. I'm a funny guy.
I'm too slow to me.
Oh, that's what you meant. Yeah, I know. Very funny.
Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda? All right, councillor Courtney makes that. All in favor? Okay, so with that, um, I am going to turn it over to our C A O to to lead the rest of it.
Hi, so thank you, your worship, and thank you, council, and those that are uh out there. Yep, so tonight we're gonna be presenting the twenty twenty one proposed amendments to the interim budget and hopefully operate in the capital side. So I'll do some introductory remarks and then uh we'll move into more of the details of the budget, which our treasurer will deal with, and so uh we'll just get started. So a healthy, sustainable community requires sound decision making that not only looks at short term issues, but also long term ramifications of those decisions. The COVID pandemic has dramatically impacted people, businesses, and government organizations. What has been very evident is that during these times of need, governments have invested significantly into the welfare welfare of people and businesses in an attempt to maintain some level of normalcy and comfort. This council has also made decisions to maintain service levels during this time of need and provided financial relief through property tax reductions that equated to approximately three hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty. Administration understands how difficult it has been for our residents and businesses. Unfortunately, the cost to provide these services is they maintain the aging infrastructure that every everyone related to taxing pieces over the past couple of years and absorbing inflation in about six percent. The town's bottom line has also been impacted by other factors. For example, Big Lakes County uh used to provide about eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's no longer uh was available last year, the upcoming likely three years, three years. Their giving up the lineup with the snow taxes have also taken a hit. The provincial government is no longer paying a hundred percent of the um tax left. It is now fifty percent. That was the fifty six um province also uh during the budget deliberations uh this year, they announced they're reducing our M S I operating of about sixty thousand dollars. Um, so that equates to a hundred eighty thousand over the next three years. Hopefully, they don't reduce it uh further. Um, and so just adding those numbers up uh basically means there's about a three point two million dollar hit to our bottom line. So that's a significant uh dollar amount. It's important to note that these issues did not occur overnight, and they will also not be addressed overnight. Administration is not recommending significant property tax increases, but we do need to be cognizant of the bigger picture and decision making for the twenty twenty one budget. It is disappointing that the province continues to download expenses onto municipalities. It is also unfortunate that provincial legislation is not in place that allows municipalities collect to collect taxes from oil and gas well and pipeline assets that would signi- significantly improve uh Big Lakes County's situation and in turn, we would likely still receive the eight hundred thousand dollars. In fact, they passed a five percent property tax increase in twenty twenty. They want to address some of the downloading and unpaid taxes. Working in collaboration with the community, we will come up with creative solutions and find a balance of their needs while maintaining our infrastructure and keeping taxes and fees that are reasonable and sustainable. This will require a lot of work, but administration is hopeful that a longer term plan can be can be introduced for twenty twenty two or the latest, the twenty twenty three budget. Town of High Curry provides numerous services that our citizens and businesses rely on every day. Balancing the services with their levels and ability to pay through property taxes, service fee fees, and uh and receiving grants is really challenging. Council passed an interim budget in December. The budget included a point seven percent increase, which is in line with uh um the council direction provided to administration. Since then, new information is available, which is included in the report. The impacts of COVID make it even more difficult. What is evident is that administration has been very frugal during these times, which we could believe will result in a two thousand and twenty surplus of approximately seven hundred thousand, which can be directed to capital purchases. The R F D contains some high level for adjustments such as extending increases due to provincial downloading and grant loop property part one, very, very high priority. Um, and so basically it shows what the interim budget was in December and what the um with these almost they would never call it mandatory, but ones that we are highly recommending. Some we just absolutely can't change because the government has reduced revenues. When we go to page two A, it includes the recommended operational budget adjustments. The first part of that page, the first five or six items are those that are highlighted on the first on page one A, and then there's about another um four or five underneath that that obviously will require a lot of deliberation.
Rod, just before you go on, do you want to bring those up or go into those now? Or are you just doing the overview at this point?
Just doing the overview and yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you. So from a capital perspective, there are still many unknowns. The biggest unknown is linked to the review of the sports palace and curling rink uh the Buchanan roof and the aquatic center H VAC system and structural beams beams. So as a result, administration is recommending not to make changes to the capitalist at this time. Administration needs to proceed on some of these items, but we'll provide an update to council prior to proceeding on any of them. And once we have a full picture, we will be coming back to council to I mean, there may be uh a reprioritization required. We know of one issue specifically with regards to the arena roof that's that is leaking. Um, and we're gonna have to determine what we're gonna be doing with that. It's either a patch or a a ten or fifteen thousand dollar uh fix or a maybe a hundred thousand dollar one. So we'll talk, I don't want to talk details now, that will be later, but that's just some of the things we need to consider into the future. So as noted, there are numerous big items coming our way already through inflation. Administration is hopeful and recommending that same queries be approved. Funds can be allocated to to address this significant, just a a understand. To put in perspective, what a one percent tax increase is on a residential property with an assessed value of two hundred fifty thousand dollars is about two dollars a month. If council were to target two percent, the result on this property again would be a four dollar a month municipal tax increase. So with that, if there are no budget, uh I think we are gonna go right to page uh two A to start talking about the uh detailed uh bigger change.
Okay, questions at this time? We're ready to move on. Okay, we're ready to move on. Thank you. Oh, that's happening. You're muted, Rita.
There we go. Can you all hear me now? Okay. So uh administration recommends to council to accept the highest priorities listed on this page, which are the first items here. Uh, the tax revision. Okay, so we're starting off with the deficit from the interim budget. Then we go into the tax levy original here. Uh, keep the levy the same funding level as twenty twenty, however, with no COVID relief, understanding that the mill rate will be reduced to match assessment and on average, no cost increase on municipal portion of tax notice. As some may have realized, this mean uh this will mean on a one month increase from twenty twenty because of the COVID relief given last year. Okay, so M S I decreased and the G pot, these two items here. Um, the the government is asking us to recognize a fifty percent uh bad debt. We record the full amount of the um tax levy and then we record the fifty percent that we're not getting, which are beyond our control, and as stated before, this is a provincial downloading to municipalities. This item here, transportation, actual cost annually will be about thirty thousand per year. However, twenty twenty expenses, we only have twenty thousand accrued, and as we have not yet received from Big Lakes County, how Big Lakes County, the final invoice. Therefore, in twenty twenty one, we will expect to pay a total of forty thousand. In twenty twenty two, we will return resume a budget of thirty thousand. At present, this is recommended as it is negotiated through the I C F agreement and any changes or parts uh negotiation process. Tourism website project over here. Oops, I skipped one. The P minus state engineering. Um, I forgot to talk about that one, but basically that's a uh a project that uh is required uh to my understanding to do with uh the uh P minus states and the tram. Uh, Rod, do you want to touch on this one?
May maybe it's best for Vern. I believe this is additional engineering to um uh to deal with the both the both the entrances for future development. Vern, are you there?
There. Can everybody hear me? Um, the uh P minus states engineering is to get the two intersections uh tender ready uh the the design and development of that in case we end up having to speed up the the construction of that due to the development within the P minus states.
Okay, so the next item is the tourism web site, uh which uh when we were doing the interim budget, we realized um and it was brought to my attention that Lakes County in the fall had canceled that project, and so can be removed from the twenty twenty one budget. The last item, now this is something that council can uh originally, we were at a hundred, the police funding in the past was funded at a hundred thousand dollars. Council can choose to continue and build a stability plan for two years from now, when the cost will be greater than a hundred thousand. This was the stretch, the dream for the interim budget. However, due to the provincial downloading of G pot and the M S I operating, administrating administration, sorry, is now recommending using these funds to cover other items such as fund the COLI increase or uh another consultant fee or other in-house uh sorry, the consultant for in in-house uh creating of policies and bringing our financial house in order. Um, the estimated cost for that is about twenty thousand. That's on down here. Okay. Um. Item to consider is the interim. If uh in the interim budget, the water department reserve funding was decreased in order to accommodate the one time dam engineering costs of fifty same level as the year before and fully funded being the fifty seven thousand from off that um gonna open the door to council and uh questions and see what's palatable.
Okay, just uh can I ask a couple of que- It's one is I'm not sure if I understand the tax levy revision original for two hundred thousand, that is, the very first.
So when the original budget from Dave McReynolds was done, they calculated an dollars, zero seven nine plus the two eighty, so roughly three hundred and thirty thousand. However, when they did that, they didn't take into consideration uh they missed one assessment, and so it came in higher. And that's the part of the reason that or the majority of, so it wasn't really, um, it's not a that everybody they 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 forgot some assess.
And and just to to clarify, what are we getting the uh grant in place of taxes for now? Because I know they cut out previously, he they cut out grants in place of taxes for some grants in place of taxes. So we lost about a hundred thousand. That was about four years ago, and now we're we're losing another fifty six or thousand. What what's properties are these for now?
Okay, so the ones that you lost were the senior housing and and social housing. Well, maybe not se- yeah, senior housing was uh Heart River Housing used to pay taxes. Uh, all the social housing used to pay taxes. The government cut that out about four years ago, but they still funded all of the uh properties like the provincial government building. Um, I don't know, uh, I'm thinking the A C, uh, anything that's private, uh, the courthouse. Those have, those type of buildings are still being funded, but now at fifty percent. Last year it was seventy five percent. This year it's fifty percent.
Okay, thank you. I understand better there. Um. Okay, and the engineering dam fund was my other question. I'm just trying to because I know we had approved that before, and I'm just wondering where we're at. I thought we had that done, or we had to have it done already.
Uh, you're asking if the work is completed? That's a Vern question.
The work, the work isn't completed yet. Uh, we got some done before the snowfall uh last year, but this is the carryover. It always was a carryover. Uh, the final documents have to be to Alberta Environment by the end of June.
Okay, now I know we don't have any choice on this one. It's gotta get done, and uh so it's in my head it it's just one of those that has to get done. Okay, I'll uh
Just to clarify or to add for that, uh, you're correct. Um, it it's gotta get done. How it gets funded is the difference. So originally in the interim budget, uh, we had reserves that you're allocating and just the department. If there's a a um pack appetite for that, then we can levy that we know we have um and and fund that and keep the levy um the reserves at the same level as they were in twenty twenty, which is a hundred and fifty thousand instead of just the ninety three thousand. Okay?
Okay. Um. Just the the install of fiber to the admin and fire hall and arena. Now, I I just, I I and everything else, I I just wanna be, but we need to move
You're correct. Uh, based on, I I actually put it there because of last council meeting. Um, we had done this research before we really started working hard on Canadian fiber, and so it's kind of a placeholder at the moment. Um, and depending on how Canadian fire fiber rather rolls out, um, it just goes to show that there is a real need for a reliable internet service, especially with this Zoom world, um, and we lost Rod how many times last council meetings? So um, just working remotely, a majority of the time, we have that good access, but every now and then it slows right down and it delays things a bit. So um, having said that, um, it's just a placeholder for right now to keep in mind. Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily feel that the funds be we would come back with a an R F D for council before we would move on something like this.
All right, I'll throw it open for others to ask questions. I see Dawn as hand. Okay, I see the yeah, on the top part of the, that's from that's one thousand. Okay. Was there a part of an email or whatever that said? He's in freezing. Yes.
All right. Yeah, like, and I didn't even, like, so we just picked some really round numbers here. Um, I think I think the real key here is if council is choosing to reduce that level of service, um, you know, you really don't want to do that mid-year, like January first. Like, you know, you'd you'd want to do it for the the snowier type thing. And so uh, yeah, we just, we just picked a number, let's say Vern calculated that that function is around fifteen thousand, and so just yeah, that is a savings this year would be four thousand roughly. We stopped the snow removal. And then in the following year, it'd be uh we change our operations, it'd be a full fifteen thousand.
And just so that I'm clear is that that change, this is for clearing the snow from the sidewalks that we do as opposed to having the residents clear the snow in their homes.
That is correct. We would still absolutely clean the sidewalks on properties that, you know, we own or next to parks. So anything that's uh linked to our property, we we have that legal responsibility to clean those sidewalks and we'll continue that. This is that for that additional service that we're providing customers that we're not legally obligated to do, but it is something that um, you know, town and previous councils has thought it was a a good value add to um property owner.
Yeah, and and this includes the boulevards in front of the houses and the lawn lawn cutting that uh we do on that too.
Yeah, that's that's correct. Unless Vern has anything else, I mean, he can, he can uh pipe in. I know he gave that fifteen thousand, and I'm I'm gonna give it a while ago, so maybe he has some additional information to add.
That there, that there fifteen thousand would just be for snow removal. Um, the numbers I calculated for that was snow removal, wasn't including the grass cutting. So you could almost double that probably.
Okay, I I see Judy's got her hand up, and I I don't know if we want to dig into one of these items or not right now, but uh, you know, when we're looking at the the costs going ahead, uh, when it comes to snow removal and our our parking lot, it's to do it to ourselves and and save that extra increase in in costs uh moving ahead. That's us.
No, I would kind of comment on that. That's probably the town hall. About that, that's what my head, I would of course comment on that.
Okay, well. Should have a little discussion on that. We could be informing residents that they have to clear the snow in front of
bringing this forward because it is one of those discretionary discretionary things that we do. And we don't have many discretionary items that we that we spend money on here. So service levels that we can adjust on things. As far as full out services that we don't uh, have to do this, this probably the only one. But like, you know, it's a sensitive topic and especially probably with seniors and those types of folks that have, um, you know, maybe various disabilities, that is probably a service that they um, that that they value. But it is a cost.
Hey, we'll do Judy then Donna.
I I think we really need to consider this. We here are always talking about making stereotypes cut to money and talk down on our expenses. This is one one area where we can make a cut. And help other budgets. And I understand what you're saying about the seniors, but there are other
Say there's uh, they say there's two pieces. There is the the grass cutting that we're doing and and it's snow removal. What's incorporated here is um, is just the snow, so apologize for that. Burn indicated that new grass would be almost double that. Um, I guess the whole thing is if council's gonna do that piece on the grass cutting, I'm not sure if there's operational issues uh, with Burn like for this calendar year because it's already into May. Um, I don't know what supplies he's gotten that type of thing, but um, you know, maybe if this discussion goes further, maybe Burn could provide some additional details as to, you know, the state cheese act. Um, for this fiscal year. Thinking.
Um, basically are prepared to start cutting, cutting all grass. Uh, where I have uh, some questions and the direction that council would like to go is uh, if you do the walking trail or the pedestrian trail that goes past the college and the ditches and and all that, are we going to also require them to cut those or are we going to be still maintaining those ditches and properties? In 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 uh, my opinion, Ver, I I think uh, if it's in front of a house and it's like a, you know, the the flat boulevard that you you get there, those ditches, um, I I see us still doing the ditches just because they they're not a uh, it is in front of a property that's owned uh by, but it's not a flat property. It's something that we've got drainage ditches along there. Uh, and if it was flat, I would say that that would be their responsibilities, but because it's not, I that would, that's a very difficult area to to cut. Just, yeah, so I would see a difference between, you know, uh, the boulevard across from the skateboard park and uh, the ditch along the uh, you know, that walk, the the sidewalk there. Arlen, you had your hand up for a second?
I did, I I as a group, I just, I'm just really confused. Are we really stumbling over fifteen thousand right now? Like, are are this what we're worried about right now? Is just that fifteen thousand? Whether we're gonna mow the boulevards or not? Or is there other bigger issues here? I guess.
I I think this is for next year's budget.
I know that, but
But Vern said it's doubled. It's thirty thousand with the grass cutting.
Yeah, you have we have the mowers going anyways, I guess, uh, people are mowing anyways, so we have a higher contractor doing our own grass on our own building. So you, we could dive into it, I guess, and really look at it. Why don't we have our own people mowing our own lawn then and and doing that as well? There's all kinds of other bigger fish here than than just the sidewalk, snow and grass cutting. I I don't, myself, I don't think like, cancel, cancel the office sidewalk, cancel the um, the consulting admin fee, cancel, that's already thirty five thousand, that's already, you know, we can go to some of the other uh, bigger things like the sound video system per council, we can cancel that, forty to seventy thousand. You know, go through and 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 make the cuts, but I, it's the small things like that that'll that'll really give the the people, uh, if you're if you're not even gonna mow the boulevard or clear the snow. I don't know. I think I think we're tripping over pennies there right now. There's lots of other, there's lots of other stuff that we look like we're gonna be spending money on that maybe we don't need right now.
Okay, yeah, you bring up a good question, Arlen. I guess, you know, just clarity on how we want to go through this process. Um, and I guess it's, for me, is, you know, what's what's the big picture? I mean, obviously, council would like to do all of these things uh, and offer all of these services, but uh, at the end of the day, what's the the impact? What do I I think in the bigger picture, what do we wanna see happen? What's the overall increase? Uh, administration is recommending uh, two percent. We had given the uh, the direction to give a one percent before. Um, if we were, I guess, you know, to me, that's the biggest question. What's the uh, the one percent or two percent uh, increase? We need to talk about that. That's the biggest question, and if we agree with the two percent, uh, what would that include? Or if we want to stick with the the one percent that we gave uh, in December or at the interim budget, uh, with these uh, changes that have occurred with the reductions from the province, what is that going to mean to the budget? So I guess those are sort of the the bigger questions and and maybe we can start with that and then we can say, okay, uh, at one percent, what is going to be lost? And then at two percent, what else could we fit in and and go from there? Cause and and maybe we can just uh, do a little round table with council and just see. Although I I think we should see what the implications are with the the with the one percent. And then uh, what would what would it be with the two percent? And then council can make a decision once we know what the implications of one and two percent are. But one and two, one percent is thirty thousand dollars. You know, we are talking relatively small dollars here.
Yeah, and that and that's why I say there's a lot of these things that we have, you know, yeah, council would like to see it, we'd like to see it some year. But some of this stuff can wait. Um, it it really can wait a little while, whether it's this year, next year, the year after. I I know some sometimes that's not a a good having you because you can get deeper today than you years later, right? Understand, I I get that. It's uh, I I yeah, we should. Well, did I blank out?
No, you're you're, I can hear you.
My internet said I was unstable, so maybe I'm just, maybe it's just me.
It does know you're unstable.
It does know I'm unstable. But I don't know, I like instantly, I I I can pick up three, four things out of here that's gives us about seventy five to a hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to spend in our little wishlist here, so. Um, and it could even be more if we look closer, right?
So maybe let's just find out what the one percent would do and what the two percent would do. Uh, and I know, and this is just my feeling is that uh, when people get their tax bills this year, they're gonna look back at their tax bill in twenty twenty and they're gonna compare it. And I know people are gonna go, oh my God, the taxes have went way up. And part of the reason for that is we gave that grant last year. And so automatically, there's going to be no matter what we do, there's gonna be flack coming our way this year because of that. Uh, you know, if just by not giving that uh, that allowance, people are going to be upset that the taxes have gone up. So I think I would like to see it stay at one to two percent and and go from there because it is gonna be a bit of a jump. But I also understand that we do need to we do need to make sure that we're getting enough money into the reserves so that we can do these capital projects that are desperately needed.
To answer your question, it's my my belief. If we assume all the top part here is high priorities, you're in a surplus position while you've got sixty four thousand that you can reallocate. This, these two two terms add up to eighty nine thousand, which would at two percent, you gain, uh, well, it's not quite one percent, it's probably three quarters of a percent, right? Twenty four thousand. Um, you'd be considering consistency and you'd be thinking in the quarter. Um, you'd be certain of that two percent.
Rita?
Yes.
You're you're cutting me in and out. I'm not sure why, like, I'm not sure if others can hear you. Oh, I see a rock knocking, like, there's, I can hear you well for a second and then all of a sudden I can't hear you. I'm not sure why.
Try it again.
Okay, yeah, so sorry, I was picking up about half of what you were saying.
All right, that's probably, it doesn't tell me I'm unstable, but I guess I might be.
All right.
Hey Rita, it might be because maybe you moved your head, maybe, I don't know, because it yeah, maybe just try to talk into the mic, maybe, I don't know. Maybe you're unstable, I don't know.
I'm going to and try and do the mouse thing. Can you see? The the mouse moving?
Yep.
The sixty four thousand here gives you two percent wiggle room kind of a thing, right? Almost two percent. If you did the funding of the reserve for the for the water treatment plant, the cola increase of one percent and the consultant fee, you will then become at the two percent requiring funding. Nope, this was fifty four, twenty four thousand negative here. So eighty nine minus six quarters, eighty, yeah, twenty four thousand. Twenty four thousand is only three quarters of a um, uh, percent. The twenty thousand, forty four thousand, which is one and a quarter, and the fifteen thousand north side of the sidewalk, if you funded that from operating instead of uh, reserves, then you would be closer to that two percent. Does that make sense? Then you can consider these things as future if you want. Um, but if you did this all that, it just gives you more flexibility for future. Uh, but like, uh, Arlen said, it doesn't have to be done right away. We can keep talking about it. If you, if that's your thing. I do wanna point out for for Arlen, the comments about the capital and the council sound thing, that's not funded. It's on the radar, but not a high priority. Um, so it's not got any allocation or funding in this current budget proposed.
Okay, so that's not part of that actual budget, so a wishlist?
That's right.
Okay.
Just for clarifying. Careful, careful. That's not the internet, that's me. Clarification, okay? I'm not sure from there what you want to do. Um, I'm just gonna talk about the capital and then we'll come back to the operating. So the capital right now really isn't being uh, the only project that's a goal and it's already been uh, tendered, contract signed, is this Forty Seventh Street. A goal, and it's already been uh tendered, contract signed, is this Forty-seventh Street. The lagoon dredging uh has to be tendered, and once the project co- uh the contract is. Uh, ready to be awarded, it will be brought back to council, but it is being funded from reserves. Uh, in the current year. The same thing with this mine heater and the water plant truck fill. The north side sidewalk, depending on what you choose to do in the operating, would be cut. I could apply for MSI capital, or we can, because it is a small amount, it's not really necessary. The back truck is from reserves, and that's an opportunity purchased, which. Um, our public work superintendent is being very uh uh. Astute and looking at his dollar value, uh, and making sure that it's worth the investment. Uh, the DRP flood uh is something that's been approved. But we still need more research, and we don't have the final numbers, uh, or the. The, um, once the contract has been awarded again, it will be brought back to council and final information. Okay, so I'm gonna come back up here and your con- your question is. What would one percent give us and what would two percent give us? Uh, so. Even if you were to say, okay, I want the fifty-seven thousand funded for reserves, I want the. Cola for thirty-two thousand, but everything else is a no. Count of uh uh count uh administration matters, still recommending to keep your target to be at two percent. And then everything else that's not funded in this budget will remain reserves for future capital projects. It won't be spent in twenty twenty-one, rather, twenty twenty-one, it will just go for. Future projects, uh, it's it's thinking long term. And uh allocating money so that you, you're you're building a stability plan. Basically, for capital projects, if you think of it from that perspective. So I'm gonna get it back to the, to your worship, uh, to um, whole council.
Okay, the other thing I was just wondering about, I don't see a potential increase in the the gas taxing here. I, and I know we talked about it, and I saw it in another document. That I read somewhere, that there's the potential for a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty from the. The gas tax or now the community building fund that they're renaming.
You're correct, however, the announcement hasn't been received yet as to what exactly that amount is. Um, we're still waiting that from from the federal government, uh, and once that's allocated. And once we have our water treatment plant kind of totally decided. Um, the superintendent will then look at his next priority projects and. Make recommendations on where to allocate the MSI operating, the federal gas tax, and which projects are gonna be the highest. You have three currently that are shovel-ready, uh, those are. Sorry. Do I have them here listed, you've got your lift station, number three, um. You've got your Fifty-second Ave from Forty-Ninth to Fiftieth, and Fifty-second from Fiftieth to Fifty-first Street. Uh, I believe those are the only two that are shovel-ready, is that correct, Vern?
Those three are shovel-ready. They're ready to be, they're ready to be tendered, the lift station and both blocks of Fifty-second Avenue. And that was part of the hundred and four thousand that council put towards the engineering from last year.
Vern? When, um, MPE did the uh the tender. Uh, uh, no, rather than engineering, the prices, are these those ones? And that the MPE, or is that the original, do you, do you know, is there, was there?
They were sticking with the original prices at this point in time. Until you tender the document, um, you won't know where your prices come in, uh, and that all goes back to council. For approval anyway, but they're, they felt comfortable in keeping those numbers.
Okay, so, given that information, we currently have. Uh, seven hundred and seventeen for the twenty twenty-one. MSI capital. Uh, that was uh funded this year. MSI capital balance is eight hundred and sixty thousand, for a total of one point five. Assuming that uh federal gas tax comes in at a hundred thousand. Then we could be at one point six, which would be very close to funding these. Uh, you know, two of the projects, not three, but two of the three, so, um. Once we hear from the federal gas tax, I think, uh, the superintendent and I will be able to make a recommendation at that point. What we should proceed with, or if we just wait for another year and then do them all at the same time. Okay?
Okay, um. Yeah, and I think it's important to know that if we do increase the budget, the the key thing is it's going to be going into reserves. That is gonna fund the the projects moving forward, that's the the key thing in there. Um. And the other thing I I wonder about is some of these one-time things, uh, if they should be. In our operating budget, or if they should be in the capital budget, because it it does impact your. These one-time items impact your operating budget in in such a way that you, uh. Uh, you know, it doesn't give you a good year-to-year reading from, you know, what it costs you to operate. And and it would be things like, uh, you know, the fifty-seven thousands uh for the the dam. Uh, some of those things, you know, I'm looking at, should those be in in capital? Just so that they don't impact the operating and comparing operating budgets from year to year and saying, yeah, we had these. This was the the base cost to operate, but we need these capital items, and they should be included. And taken out of the, what I'm gonna call what we put aside for reserves each year.
I'm gonna answer it in a different way, it's. The Pstab, Republically Public Standards Accounting. Um, com- uh, organization kinda guides you as to where you can build things. And engineering doesn't, on its own, does not give you an asset. That you can put into the capital side, it's not. If it's part of a project, then it's part of the cost, then you can allocate it all together, but because it's strictly only engineering. For that status, um, it's unfortunate, but it has to operate. Does that answer your your comment, or? By identifying it as a one-time, so then the next year, when you're doing your budget, you know that. A hundred and forty-seven thousand isn't necessary in the next year's budget, because it was a one-time in the current budget.
Okay, uh, and I see one-time operating costs here as you went down, um. The dam I I get, uh, consultant for for broadband, um. What was that again, what's that for?
That's fifty percent of the CARES program, uh, uh, not, uh, grant. You know, the CARES pro- grant that you guys received in twenty nineteen, we thought we would. Um, and and this was done in the interim budget, even before we started with, um, uh, Canadian Fiber. Uh, we thought, okay, if we have this money and we can become more. Ready and more knowledgeable on what uh is information that's required uh to. Put the fiber in place and know that it's gonna be supported, uh, that's what that grant is all about, so. Some of that can be used for the uh, um, le- legal fees that we're looking into. Uh, some of it was used last year in the branding stuff, uh. But I didn't know that till uh when I was doing the audit this year, so. Uh, it's not the full thirty-seven-five, but that wasn't adjusted, cause it's not really material, uh, at the end of the day. The thirty-seven-five is the the town's um cost. And we would get thirty-seven-five in revenue from the province.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, if I understand it right, this is money that's a grant? Uh, so the money's already there, it's not really an expense?
Uh, no, uh, it it's fifty-fifty, so you have to spend thirty-seven-five in order to get the other thirty-seven-five.
Uh, okay, gotcha.
Or you have to spend seventy to get back thirty-seven-five.
Okay, gotcha. And could we use some of that money to put the broadband into the town if we wanted to?
No, you're actually a- asking about the actual infrastructure, the installation.
Yeah.
That was not part of the grant application. Items.
Okay.
It was research, it was, uh, consulting fees, um, uh. Uh, advertising, that kinda stuff.
When does that grant have to be spent by?
Uh, well, we've gotten two extensions, so I would think this is the last year.
Okay. And bylaw e-ticketing for eight thousand four forty-five, just. Clarification on what that is, that's the 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 electronic tickets that you can give home now?
Yes.
Yeah, so I can help Rita. Yeah, oh, Alan's here, oh. Yeah, I can let Alan, is Alan there, or I can answer, you don't know Rita?
Uh, yeah, that, that bylaw e-ticket, that's for the uh equipment, for the uh. The vehicle, which has been installed and is uh. Being uh. Tested as we speak, so. It's gonna be another. Little bit before we go live with it to uh. To use it uh full-time with the government uh. Program, so, but it is installed. And working fine right now.
Okay, so we've already paid for that then?
That. Rita might have to answer that one, I'm not sure, but.
Well, if we haven't paid, it will be invoiced shortly, uh, it was discussed and approved at the interim budget in December. Uh, as was the floor radio upgrading, but again, the reason that they're listed here is not to. Uh, rehash them, but rather to realize that they're a one-time investment. Uh, next year, you won't have those costs in the budget.
Great. Yeah, and what was the cemetery cost for, I I'm not sure if I remember that.
That's the markers that, uh. There's cement, it's kinda like a sidewalk, is, um, Vern, can you help me out?
Yes, it's a side, it's a sidewalk that goes down in between the the headstones to mark out the graves. Okay, so it has to be redone, is that the? No, we have to add one, because we're running out of room on the existing one? Okay. Well, perhaps, I I'm not, any other questions before we move on off of the sort of one item? I understand it better now, I don't know if. But I I'm thinking maybe as a process, we can sort of go up, look at what uh we can, we can. Cut out, we can look at, oh, I see Judy's got a question, go ahead, Judy.
So, yeah, go back to your one item, so technically, this stuff is already paid for, come out. Of the budget, is that correct?
Rita?
There are some, yes. So the fifty-seven thousand you approved, well, with an RFD, uh, previously. It was put in the twenty twenty-one budget, the only difference is how you fund it now. We're requesting a review from reserves and consider operating expense, okay, so that one. The consultant broadband, the bylaw e-ticketing, the floor radios, and the cemetery. Were all things that were in the interim budget. What's different here is that Gilwood Transfer Station became known to us just recently. And only ten thousand of that twenty thousand that we're adding to this revised budget is in the one-time. Because it's from last year, right? Our actual cost per year, we're expecting to be thirty thousand, but in twenty twenty-one, we're gonna have to pay. Forty thousand because of ten thousand from twenty twenty. Okay, planning and development, the P-Vine Estates, that twenty-two thousand for engineering, again, one is, once it's paid for. It's done, it's a one-time for twenty twenty-one. Those two items are new to the revised budget, whereas the other ones were kind of already there. Were in the interim budget, okay, so then. If we go to the i- the following items, the the second block to be considered. The first thing is the. Engineered dam pump. That's because I'm asking if council now wants to change the funding source. From the reserves to fund it in the operating. And build that reserve back up to the hundred and fifty thousand that it was the year before.
Okay, okay, now I get it, now I get it, thank. Thank you.
No problem.
Alright, um. One of the, that when I'm looking at this, one of the things for me, uh, I don't think that. And and maybe administration can tell us more about the P-Vine Estates engineering. I don't know if we need to spend that money this year to be shovel-ready. If if, uh, you know, they go ahead and build the Tim Hortons this year. We still didn't need that, um, to be shovel-ready. This would be something that might come in twenty twenty-two, maybe, maybe not. And that's only needed if there was more developments coming in there. So in in my head, there's money that could be saved there, or we could reduce that one. Out of this year's budget. And I was really, is, go ahead.
Yeah, so, again, I can't see Vern, so I'll add some here, and Vern, you can add. Let's see everybody, um, so, uh, you, the, we 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 can do that, um. I might, I have been in discussions with with P-Vine a a little bit, um. It it's just, uh, you know, there there may be an opportunity to get some of this. This this, I call preliminary work done, um, cause I know at some point, we're gonna have to do something, like, hopefully, sooner rather than later. We have massive development there and all is good, um, I guess it's just, I guess one of my concerns is when you're dealing with. Several parties, um, and, you know, funding these uh intersections. If we have some of the engineering work done, maybe P-Vine, for example, can, uh. They have a month off as far as in between projects, and they can bring some of their cats in and maybe do some of the work. Um, and so it's just being ready for maybe taking advantage of, I guess, the partners that is. Supposedly, um, assisting or somewhat responsible for this intersection, so. Um, you're right, we 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 can remove it, um, it's just, I guess. Getting us prepared so that we're ready to roll when it's there, um, and accommodating, I guess, hopefully, our other two. Parties that will contribute to. parties that will contribute to this. Because the 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 whole issue is, in government, we're we're a little bit slow, right? Um, you know, all of a sudden, somebody says they have, uh, in two months, they have some available resources, or the province said, oh, we're coming to town and we are doing some paving, we can do that little bit. Uh, um, if we're not ready, because that takes time to get it through the council process. Is, fit it in maybe this year, may- maybe we can get it done this year. Not that it's required this year, but it should be nice to actually have it done and we don't have to worry about it anymore. I don't, Vern, you want to add anything?
Um, not really, um, it's, it's exactly what Rod said, it doesn't need to be done. Uh, but it's to be ahead of it so that we're not behind the eight ball when the, when the time comes to have it done. Um, if we, we had a crystal ball and we could see what, how long it's gonna take for development to happen down there, um, we would be miles ahead of the game, but we don't have that. And if we get caught up in a, in a situation like we did with uh transportation in regards to the Tim Hortons, um, look how long that's held us up. So, it it's, it's council's decision, and and I agree with Rod, we could hold off one year, but are we being proactive?
Okay, um, and then, uh, I guess the other issue is the the COLA. I know council already talked about COLA and 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 said no for the this COVID year. Um, I'll throw it back out to to see what council's thinking at this point in time. I know our uh, our staff have worked really hard and everything else out there during this year. And and it is a tough year, uh, but, so, I'll throw it out there, see what people are thinking on that. Arlen?
How many years now in a row have we gone without COLA?
I'm not certain, but I think there was COLA, um.
Was it COLA last year?
Nope.
Was it COLA the year before?
He, I believe so.
Nineteen, yes, two nineteen.
Uh. Was that the one, Rod, where they gave point seven and one day?
I think so, let me go just grab my sheet.
If I, I can go on my internet and find it too. But I'll lose you guys.
I'm pretty sure that that was twenty seventeen.
The point seven?
Point seven and the uh, uh, two days off, I think it was, not one day, I think it was two.
So it's twenty seventeen, so in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, do you recall, Vern?
Uh, I do not recall.
Good question, Mark, there. I know he did a review, so it was, trust my memory.
Yeah, yes, sorry, I can't find my uh, my cheat sheet, I think that sound went right.
Okay, okay, now my second, my second question is, is consulting admin. You wanna, you wanna put the sales pitch on that or what?
While I search this, Rod, would you take care of that?
So Rita, your screen is showing, do you know?
Okay.
All right, welcome to the question. Uh, consulting admin for twenty grand. Wanna, can you explain that?
So I think it's a, it's a few things, yes, um, we've got a few things, um, as you know, on, like, we've still got a ton on the financial side to try to get caught up. Um, you know, and we keep thinking we're going to be able to dedicate some horsepower to getting us on track, and, you know, it just, we just run into issue after issue after issue. And it just keeps pushing everything back, so just to give maybe Rita a little bit more support so we can actually get ahead of the curve, or at least on the curve, um, you know, it's just, say, even this budget, I mean, it it's coming out too late. Um, we also, um, aside, like, when we got election, we can, we're gonna be handling that internally, we didn't budget anything for that. But, um, in the last little bit here, there's been a few policies and procedures that have gone forward that council struggled with. Um, you know, just getting some horsepower to assist us with getting through some of these things that you guys are are looking for. Um, you know, we did pass a bunch of poli- policies in the first quarter of old tw- twenty-one, um, and those policies, I was able to get some, some assistance on and some horsepower, just dedicated time on them. They all went through very, very smooth. Um, you know, the last couple haven't been as smooth, and we didn't spend much time on them. And it's been a bit of a struggle at council, so just some additional expertise to assist us to deliver on your guys' expectations. So that's what, uh, that's what we're putting in there, but mostly for the financial side, helping out Rita, just getting caught up.
I'm sorry for putting that kind of strain on you.
No, it, well, it's no strain on me, but I I can make it, it's a strain on me seeing Rita for all those hours, it really does, it's, it's just, you just can't get caught up, you know, this thing after thing that's been occurring here. Um, people off because of illnesses and stuff, and Rita, she didn't want me to put this in, to be honest. She said, no, no, I'm gonna get into it, I'm gonna get into it, you know?
But, yeah, it's hard to say no to a COLA and then all of a sudden get twenty thousand for consulting admin. That's where I'm going with that, I'm just saying it, it's a tough balance, right? I, I, I have to say, I would agree to a COLA. But I, I won't, I, I, for any of a COLA, and we gotta look at not doing the consulting fee, as well as maybe, uh, the north, obviously, the fifteen for the north side of the office, and even installation of the fiber to admin fire hall and arena right now. And even the grass cutting, but I, but I don't wanna give on the snow clearing, the sidewalk snow clearing, because uh, there's a lot of those streets that run on the uh, the main highway, running north and south through the, through this town. And when M-Con plows all the snow onto their sidewalks, especially going north and south, there's all those houses have elderly people on it that aren't gonna be able to get out and do their sidewalks, but guess what, we come along and clear it for them. And that is very, very important. And that's just one aspect of that clearing, so. I, again, I gotta go back to, I I agree, if, I agree on the COLA, but we have to cut some of these other things, or what is somebody else thinking?
Uh, Rita, did you get, uh, you got your hand up there, you got some information?
I do. Uh, it, Vern's memory is good, twenty seventeen was the point seven, twenty eighteen was one point five, twenty nineteen was two. Um, I didn't find the survey that we had done, which showed that when we were giving these percentages, uh, other municipalities were giving a little bit higher. And so, we're still not keeping up to the averages in the northern area. That's what we had looked at, uh, so, again, that's just the information I wanted to give, share with you guys.
No, I appreciate that, and it, and it has been a, a year without, and it's been a hell year for all of our employees, so the town employees. So I think, uh, you know, one percent COLA bump is, is, uh, I I think that's a good thing, but that, like you say, that has to come from somewhere. So I think, uh, that's, that's where I see it's gotta come from. My opinion.
Okay, other counselors? Judy?
So I, I, I realize that the COLA is an issue, and it's a hot topic. But again, we're in this pandemic, and a two percent last year when the pandemic broke. I, I can't support a COLA, knowing that people are still losing jobs, hours are cut, loss of wages, businesses are struggling. Going down the list, the consulting, the consulting, unwilling to support because we've gotta get caught up here, we're just chasing our tail, going round and round and round. The sidewalks and snow, the sidewalks with the snow and the grass cutting, that is something, that's thirty thousand dollars. There's a thirty thousand dollar savings there. We're paying a contractor to clear the snow at our own town office? That doesn't make sense to me, there's a savings there. I understand what Arlen's saying about M-Con going down that main road and blocking the driveways, that we'd really have to consider. Or find a solution to that, I, I don't understand how M-Con can do that. Um, installing fiber and admin to the fire hall, that can be put on the back burner. We don't know what we're doing with, um, our internet server here, we, we, they might, who knows, they could be in in a couple of months, so that would be a savings there. The north side of the town office sidewalk, that's another fifteen thousand that, I, I don't understand why they can't just, like, use it, patch it up. And that's another fifteen thousand. We, we gotta do this as a, everybody, we gotta do this as a community. I understand we're gonna have to raise the taxes. But look at our, we need millions of dollars to replace this stuff. We have a roof that's failing on the arena, we don't even know if the arena's gonna pass its test. We may have to build a new sports center, we've got the lagoon, we've got all these streets, everything that was put off. If you read the final, it was put off in two thousand eighteen, it was put off, it was put off. We have to get some serious cuts here, and we're gonna have to actually increase the taxes to get ahead of the game. That's my opinion on this.
All right, uh, Donna, did you wanna weigh in?
I'm kind of the same mind as Council Stenhouse. Um, I know we have to increase taxes, um. I, I don't necessarily have a problem per se with the consulting, because, um, as Council Stenhouse said, like, we need to get ahead of the game, and we're just falling farther and farther behind the game. And, uh, I, I agree with Council Courtly in that, um, the snow plowing or the sidewalk snow, I think is one to keep, the grass cutting, I can, I think that can be, be cut somehow, or, um, look at something, but, I mean, I know there's a lot of, uh, wish lists here that we need to get done, but I, I, I'm not sure how we're gonna do it. In all honesty, I don't know how we're gonna do it.
And I, you know, I, I'm a little bit of the same, we could get, uh, an influx of two or three million dollars a year, and we could spend it tomorrow. It, it wouldn't be hard to, to spend any money, we've got a huge backlog of things to get done. There's no doubt about that. So from my perspective, I'm also okay with, uh, seeing an increase in the, uh, in the budget this year to go from, from, say, a one percent to a two percent. I'm okay with that, um. Yeah, that, I guess that's sort of where I'm coming from, and, you know, we can look at these individual items and and go through them. As far as COLA, you know, that's, it's a tough one, because I know our, our staff works really hard. Um, but I also realize we're in a pandemic, others are struggling. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, people, I mean, our staff, a few, there's nothing last year or this year so far, I mean, we can change that, but, uh, uh, the other thing that we haven't had, you know, you look at a lot of places around, uh, town, they haven't had increases in, in many years, um, so that one's tough, I, I, and it's not a huge ask there. And specifically with the admin and consulting, I know that we're behind. You know, I, you know, again, we had to get an extension for our audit. It just shows that we are, we're challenged to get everything done and get it out on time, so, you know, those, you know, I, hopefully, we can get caught up so that we can stay afloat. We're, we're trying so hard to catch up, we can't ever get ahead of the curve, so I understand that one. Um, you know, I agree, the sidewalk grass cutting. To me, I shovel my walk anyways, but I know there are some parts of town that, uh, it is beneficial, and maybe there's a way to do some parts and not others. Um, the grass cutting, I think we would have to look at that a little bit more, what would they be cutting, what wouldn't they be cutting? Uh, because when you're cutting your lawn to go out and run around and cut the, that little boulevard in front, you could do that. I see your hand, Arlen, I'll get to you soon.
No problem.
And then, uh, yeah, take out the install to admin and fire hall for now. Um, and the north side sidewalk, um, I mean, we've already approved it to get it done. Whether it comes from operating or whether it comes from a reserve, to me, it really doesn't matter. Uh, if we approve a two percent fit in, we can, and the rest goes into reserve, whether it's this year or another year, doesn't really matter. Um, so, yeah, that's where I'm coming from. And, Arlen, go ahead.
Just a question, it just, it just keeps, uh, hanging me on here is, uh, why is this one aspect of our town's workload, the sidewalk snow and grass cutting? Why is this one aspect in our budget when we've never seen this before? Um, this, this item, where if you want to micromanage, we could look at, you know, the flowers, the, the watering the flowers, we could look at, uh, street sweeping, we could look at, uh, pot filling, we could look at all kinds of other things to itemize and put dollar values to and cut. Why is this one thing in the budget where we've never seen this before?
Through your worship, uh, this was one i- item identified through council. Um, at one of the meetings, uh, last year, is to include in the budget deliberations as a, uh, potential cut. So this actually came directly from council to, um, asked to debate it in this year's budget.
But street flowers and watering flowers added?
Nope.
I thought we discussed that at the same time.
Uh, well, it, it, well, if it was, I apologize, and I missed it on my notes. Uh, so if that, that is the case, I.
I'm just, I'm just asking, because it, it just seems weird that we've got this one item.
Nope, there was, there was this one, um, there was also a couple comments with regards to, uh, recreation and some of our, uh, uh, organizations that we support, meaning the museum and the, uh, library. That's what I had my notes from that, uh, strategy session. So if I missed any, I sincerely apologize, I. So if I missed any, I sincerely apologize. I, if there's, uh, you know, if, if there was a couple of others, I, again, I, I didn't intentionally attempt to miss those.
No, I was just, I was just wondering where it came from because it's an item, it's an item that we've never looked at or debated about before. And why is, why is it now in this, in this, uh, um, council consideration as opposed to other years?
Yep, no, this, this request came directly from council. It's no removal.
The only thing that comes to mind is something that, um, we alluded to. If other snow covering, uh, snow removal contractors are having issues with their, uh, insurance coverage, then council may wanna consider that from that liability perspective also. When you're clearing the snow and somebody and you're responsible for clearing that snow on somebody else's sidewalk and you didn't do it properly, then you're taking on that responsibility, that liability. And you're like, oh, that you've done your due diligence.
And that, and that's, and that's why we sent.
Will be the one covering that lawsuit. Whereas if you put it back on the ratepayers, then it's their liability, their lawsuit and not so much yours.
But it's our sidewalks.
No, when you're doing a local improvement, your ratepayers actually could be paid for that sidewalk because it's an improvement to their, adjacent to their property. And that's pretty much the, correct, if I'm wrong, uh, my understanding of sidewalks.
So if somebody slips and falls on the corner, street corner on the sidewalk, it's suing the homeowner that's closest home to it?
If the snow was not removed, yes.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, um, so that is, yeah, so that's how, if you, if your sidewalk, your house, if, if you do not, if the town didn't do it, right? So once a town is doing sidewalks in front of people's houses, we actually do assume that liability. If we didn't do the sidewalks and it therefore becomes the responsibility of the, the property owner, their insurance policy covers them for any slip, strips or falls that occur on the sidewalk that is in front of their house.
We would have to make a bylaw that may declare that the homeowner is responsible for clearing the snow in front of their house.
Yeah, we have to make sure of that, but it's, uh, I mean, I, I have to deal with AUM on a hard track of, of other things.
And I'm putting up roadblocks so nobody can walk on my sidewalk then.
It's, uh, if you go into some of the other major centers, it's not, there is some of that. Uh, there is, uh, people that actually put up signs indicating, uh, walking on this sidewalk is at your own risk. It's slippery at times, you know, there are those that are very risk adverse that actually do put up those signs on their sidewalk.
I agree with that. I just think it's chicken shit myself. We gotta own up and, and there are our sidewalks and we should clean, keep them clean. I mean, you can pass on liability, you can pass on whatever you wanna pass on, but at the end of the day, it's just chicken shit. And I think we gotta pull man up and, and do our own sidewalks and keep them clean in the winter time. That's, that's my, that's my take of it. Because it's, it's just crazy. I, I just, uh, I understand the grass cutting, yeah, maybe if a mower is nearby or if it's out of control maybe, but the sidewalks are a slip, trip, fall hazard. And, uh, with the elderly people walking around, I think it's, uh, it's something that we have to maintain. That's where I'm at. But anyways, so, uh, are we any further?
Well, Judy's got her hands up and then we'll take, after this, maybe we'll take a little break and then we'll reconvene and then figure out how to wrap this up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so Arlen?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on our sidewalks or a slip, trip hazard. They are right now. They're completely bone dry. They're crumbling. We need new sidewalks. If we cut, if we make these cuts, we, maybe we can afford to put in some nice new smooth sidewalks.
This little bit, this little bit that we're debating will not even make twenty feet of a sidewalk.
But it's a start. If we, if we take fifteen, thirty thousand dollars from each line, it's a start. At least we're trying. It's a start. We can't get, we can't keep going this way. We have to. We keep saying we're gonna cut the budget, we're gonna make some serious cuts here, but we're not.
If you look down on forty-seventh street that's already passed, that street is gonna get new gutters and sidewalks. So as we, as we do our improvements yearly, every ten years or however we do these with all the streets and the, the water sewer pavement curb and gutter sidewalks, some of those will be addressed. There's some that need to be fixed. I understand that, but it's still all part of that. We have, we have a long old process with our, with our upgrades that will fix some of that stuff.
But there's a list of equipment and things that we need. Public Works needs graders and.
Every year.
And loaders. So we gotta start cutting out the leisure out of here so that we can buy their stuff and do these improvements. If we continue to clean everybody's sidewalks, cut their grass.
We're not, we're not cleaning their sidewalk, we're cleaning our sidewalks.
No.
We're not, we're not going into their houses and their yards and cleaning their sidewalks for them. We're just cleaning the ones along the street.
Technically, they're responsible for it. It's just like technically you're responsible for the fire hydrants that spoke to your house, so.
For that one. Yeah, well, I'll fight until, uh, there's an issue.
Okay, um, I guess we can take a little break. And I think the big thing for council to think about, are we okay with the, the one or the two percent? That's one question we've gotta answer. Um, the second question, and, and Rod, maybe do you would just wanna go through and talk about some of these? I see you've done a category for approved there. Is, did you want to go through and just say, do we wanna approve this? Yes, no, as we go down? Is that why it's laid out this way?
Well, I think that is the easiest way. Um, you may, so you got a couple, yes. But I think there are topics that, you know, you gotta do one of two ways. You just go down the list and see what people think. Or you could get motions to, to add, um, uh, you, to save some time. You may just wanna group maybe the, the top ones if most people are okay with that. Maybe, like, I know there's some discussion on the P-Vine Estates Engineering, like maybe group five or six of those top ones. Because you, you can't change the MSI operating, it's a minus, no matter what you, you know, that's not, it, it's a minus sixty thousand. So I think six, five or six of those top ones, council really has no choice. So if you accept those, then debate the ones that maybe they're content. So let's say P-Vine, do one, take a vote, then go on to, then just keep going down. Again, I think that, that top grouping, maybe you can ask, does anybody have any acceptance to approving any of them? And if nobody says anything, then you can do all those ones and then start proceeding one by one on the lower ones. That's what I'd suggest, like, because these are actually amendments that would need to be made.
And then we would need a motion on whether we wanted a, a two percent increase, right?
Yeah, so after you do all this, um, you could say, if, if there's funding.
So we need a motion on one or two percent to go from there?
Yeah, after, after you kind of go through these things, then you could say if you, if you, if somebody still wanna go to two percent, maybe somebody wanna go to five percent.
Everybody looks locked up from my end. That's not a good sign.
I, I think you're the only one that's locked up on me. Like New York, you might be. Yeah, I think you're doing that. Yeah.
Yeah, Brian again. You're locked up.
So maybe that, some of the deputy isn't here.
Bombed out, then what happens?
Yeah. So no, deputy isn't here. Oh, um, she went to protocol, her deputy isn't here to take it, because he was gonna take a recess anyways. Um.
Take five.
So maybe if we could have a motion to take, take a recess?
Make motion to take five, for ten minutes.
Now, in favor?
I got a question here. I just got a notice on my screen that Siz is the host now.
That who's the host?
Cizerowski is the host now.
Mine said, mine said Brian Panastik's the host.
Five-year keeper now, watch out. So actually, so maybe can any, uh, Rita, my computer, since you expanded your thing, I can't see mine. To see if the mayor's trying to get in. Can we just?
Five thousand, I stopped sharing.
He's always trying to get in.
It says he's been.
His name is there, I see it.
Oh, over there, okay, so he's.
Are we officially on break?
Yes. Uh, do you wanna, so what time do we resume?